Want to call the Foxborough School Committee meeting to order this evening. February 24th, 7 o'clock. The agenda is as follows for this evening. 7 o'clock visitors, 7:10 approval of minutes, 7:15 teaching and learning highlights, adapted physical education, Ms. Sue Burrows. 7:25 YMCA partnership, Mr. Ed Hurley, President, Hockamock Area YMCA. Mr. Patrick Murphy, Invencis Foxborough Branch Executive Director. 7:40 correction, effective date for high school wellness requirement, Ms. Spinelli. 7:50 strategic plan mid-year update, Ms. Spinelli, Dr. Berdose. 8:10 strategic planning process, Ms. Spinelli. 8:20 superintendent's mid-cycle review, Ms. Spinelli. 8:40 other matters. And at 8:45 we will be entering into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with non-union personnel, individual contracts, including the superintendent, and strategies regarding potential litigation. The committee will not return to open session. That being said, we will start with visitors at 7 o'clock. Do we have any visitors that wish to be heard? Seeing none, we will move on to approval of minutes. First, we will do the January 27th regular meeting, school committee meeting. Do we have any additions or revisions on this?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept?
Oh, actually, there was one, I'm sorry. I'm sure that our wonderful secretary caught this, but Mr. Gardner's name is spelled wrong on the second page.
Wow. We're on the second page.
Page two at the bottom.
Mr. Gardner didn't catch that.
Mr. Gardner didn't catch that. Okay.
Other than that, I have more changes. I'm a stickler, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
I did appreciate that Janet mentioned that I was supportive and made nice comments, hopefully, about the reporter coverage. I think, I was trying to remember back as I was reading this today, I think this was back when you and our patch representative were the only two left in the room and we were going through our last couple of items. So, I'm using this as an excuse one more time to just publicly thank the reporter and the patch for continued good coverage.
Okay, so we have a motion as second, as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, thank you. We have the minutes of our joint meeting, special meeting with advisory committee, February 12th. I do have a correction for this. The end, there were several members that had to leave early from the meeting, so Steve motioned to adjourn the meeting. Bev seconded. And then there was three zero. So, at the very bottom, it said the meeting was adjourned at 9:12. So, Steve made the motion to adjourn the meeting. Bev seconded. And then it was three zero because Bruce and Tina had to leave the meeting before the end. So, that's the only revision I have.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero, thank you. And then, we have the policy subcommittee meeting, February 13th. Minutes. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, thank you. Okay. We will move on to teaching and learning highlights, Ms. Spinelli.
Yes. While I'm introducing, I would like to invite Ms. Burrows up to the guest table, as we call it. Ms. Susan Burrows is a wellness teacher in the district for many, many years, and she is our adaptive physical education teacher. And I want to, I see your principal, Mike Stanton, behind you here in support, so that's wonderful.
My cheering crowd.
Always key. But, I want, this actually came up because, those of us in education, we kind of take some of the things that we do that wouldn't seem routine to outsiders, but seems routine to us because we're so used to it. And this came up, actually, in a discussion I was having with Mr. Uden earlier, close to our budget presentation back in December. And we started talking about what adaptive physical education is, and got into a really great discussion. And I realized, it's much more, and much more goes on in this area than the public would know. So, I thought, what a great teaching and learning highlight, that it'll help educate all of us in the community into exactly what happens, that, you know, wellness is not same wellness for everybody, and it really has to be adapted. So, Sue put together a great handout for you to read prior to today's meeting. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Burrows. Welcome.
I'm really excited to have this opportunity too, because I think this is a component of wellness education that's really a significant part of students who are differently abled, their ability to be a full part inclusive of wellness, and how this allows them the opportunity to be successful in wellness, and how it's done, and how we modify different things for them to have the success. So, children get the same, they get a double opportunity, really, in a way, because they do attend regular wellness, all students, it's inclusive. And then they get the opportunity, if they receive adaptive physical education services, to also receive that as a related, a direct service. And it's actually usually as a pull-out, and it's in a smaller group setting. And it focuses on, in the lower grades, it's very developmental, like you normally do in wellness curriculum. And it's done in small increments, smaller groups, greater breakdown of the skills, and it gives them an opportunity to practice. I usually coordinate with other wellness teachers, what is your unit, what is your curriculum you're working on right now, so we can do a lot of pre-teaching. And we find this has been really beneficial for the students to already be prepared for what they're going to be doing in regular wellness. One component of adaptive phys-ed that I really focus on for some students is, it's called partial participation. So, some children are not ready for a full 40-minute class of wellness. So, they get their allotment in adaptive phys-ed, and we watch how they can slowly and successfully integrate into wellness, such as being able to sit and listen to directions. That's a big component of being able to be part of a class and be successful. It might be the first 10 minutes for a while, and then, we leave, we have them leave when they're successful. And then we build upon that amount of time in the class for them to build up in the success. So, it's really a sub-discipline of physical education, and all the things that we work on in phys-ed slash wellness are all the same aspects that we focus on in adaptive phys-ed. The referral process, assessment process, is very multifaceted. It's not just one set routine or one set way I would do a referral or an assessment. Quite often, it can be a discussion. Somebody might say, "Well, could you come and just watch so-and-so today in class? Because I'm not sure." First grade and kindergarten, all skills for most children, it's all over the place. So, I usually put children like that on my radar unless we've had specific requests to evaluate or assess them. I just want to give credit to Lisa McDonnell, who's a physical therapist. She and I work really close, and this is how we migrate in from, once a child is able to exit PT. She and I communicate very close with each other and decide whether they can be exited from PT and don't need adaptive phys-ed. And then if they do, we look it over, we talk to the teachers, we talk to the family, and then we generate a referral for an assessment if need be, and wait for approval from the family and signature, and proceed from there. So, one of the processes is that parent permission must definitely occur before we do an assessment. Screening can be non-required preliminary step to determine if a full evaluation is necessary. And some of the assessment tools I use are discussions with the teacher, discussion with an OT, discussion with the PT, speech, all the other services that a child may have, or a classroom teacher. They may say, you know, they can't cross the midline, they can't sit in their chair, they don't seem to be able to focus. And a lot of times, those are very good cues on a child's ability to be able to do things physically. So, that sometimes can be a precursor for where I proceed. Observations in regular physical education class are available, and informal tests such as checklists. I have a Virginia checklist I use, which is really nice. It covers all the domains, cognitive, emotional, social, gross motor skills, developmental skills, and things like that. My skill emphasis really is developmentally driven, which is all our curriculum is. So, most children who might be differently abled, it may take them eight weeks, 10 weeks, 12 weeks to develop and learn a skill that a typical child may be able to learn in two weeks. So, the progress can occur, it's just quite often at a slower pace, and you have to make more modifications either in the setting they're in, the type of equipment you use, your approach, do you do centers, do you do one-on-one? How do you present them with the skill so they can progress to the next level? This is accomplished, too, I think, though my long-term goal for my students, and I'm really glad that Ed's here because this gives Ed a nice chance to segue in. My long-term goal for my students in APE is to develop good lifetime healthy activity skills that they can enjoy and participate in with their families and peers within the community. And this is accomplished by exposing them to accessible community resources that they can utilize safely. In order to achieve this, the Foxborough Y has been a community resource for adaptive phys-ed for 11 years now. And this has been a great opportunity, and this has offered the students an opportunity to successfully access the community. And this is a really integral part of a child's transition, once they get to the age 22 and they move on. Being able to access your community, know what your resources are, being able to do it safely and with your peers and with your family is an important, important part of their transition when they move on from the school years. So, one of the things that really was nice for me when I first started the adaptive phys-ed was I was able to connect with the Y. Kim Cohen and Dan Brennack were the two people that were my resources, and they sat down with me, and I have to say, they just opened their arms and said, "What do you want to do?" And they totally embraced the idea and were very, very supportive. And it's come a long way. The Y has just been a great opportunity for these students to, so as they progress through elementary school up to middle school, elementary, like I said, is very developmental, skill-driven. And as they get older, I try to shape them more for a healthy lifestyle, learning to do more things that are going to keep them healthy, and find out what they like to do. And really focus the curriculum around that for adaptive phys-ed. As they move into high school, that's when we access the Y. Tuesdays are swimming, Friday we do studio, cardio, spin bikes, track. And the other nice thing that thanks to the Y is having the fitness center here. All the students are, have access to, use that. They use it five days a week. They're able to go in and use it on their, they have rec time for about 30 minutes every day besides having access to the fitness center here. So, they really have a multitude of opportunities to be physically active, which I think is really, really important. So, what I also would like to say is, all the assistants who work with me make what I do really work. They're very supportive, they're by my side, they work with the kids, they sweat with the kids, they get in the pool with the kids, they do put their bathing suits on at quarter of 8:00 in the morning, and they jump in the water. So, I just want to make sure that they get credit where credit's due, because they are sweating right alongside them, too. So, they do a great job. What I, way I'd like to wrap this up with is to just show a quick video of last year's Special Olympics, because I think for me, this is what culminates everything we do in adaptive phys-ed. This is their day. It's family, it's community, it's school, a lot of the kids' classrooms go. So, for me, I think this really culminates the excitement of the day. Is there one more button I need to hit here?
Yeah, right in the middle. See the arrow in the middle?
Yep. There you go. So, that's pretty much their hard work at the end of the year. Any questions, comments, sharing, questions?
That's great. Yeah, Steve?
I love this program, and we have many, but is there anything that you need, like, say, role model visits, or something that would inspire even more the students and recognize their pride and their achievements as they go through this program? I was trying to watch in the slideshow the age groups that you have, and they, I'm sure they fluctuate for you over time.
Yes, yeah.
But, you know, if there's all, what's the concentration there? And is there anything that you need from, other than, you know, great organizations like the Y and that sort of thing? Assistance with, or?
I think their resources are really good. We have the integration program is at the Y, which offers the students a lot of opportunities. Several of the students that I've had in the past from high school have moved on to participating in a variety of the programs at the Hockamock Y. I know in Norwood they have challengers that a lot of the students go to. And so, I think, as far as Foxborough, I think we have a pretty good system of integrating the students into a lot of variety of opportunities. I think one of the things, and the other things I do, I mean, I run some other before and after-school programs, and it's inclusive. We've had some students who participated in the BACH program this year, we have students who are differently abled or in a running club. So, I think anytime we offer something like that, it's open to everyone as long as we have the support we need. And I think in reference to that question, is sometimes for some students who might like to be involved in a before-school, after-school program, who might have special needs, I think that is something maybe we want to visit and see, how can we give, you know, what could we do to provide enough support or adequate support so those students could be more a part of before, after-school programs? I think if that was any question that maybe we could visit, that would maybe be one.
I just want to make a comment that not every wellness teacher can be an adaptive physical education teacher. It does require specialized training, so Sue would not mention that herself, so I want to mention that.
Thank you for, because, clarifying that, because, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot that goes into this whole assessment process, so it's very thoughtful, and I'm just really impressed with all of the resources that you provide for our students.
And it is a great segue to the Y, which is why we paired them up, because there are, like I said, times where you, things become so routine for us that you, I don't want to say take it for granted, but it becomes so routine that you don't stop and celebrate it. So, before we exit Sue and introduce the Y folks, this past fall, we were at a breakfast meeting at the Y, and we were in your meeting room at the Foxborough Y, and our students went by on their way out, like, having finished. And I started waving, and somebody next to me said, "Who are you waving at?" I said, "Oh, high school students, they're going by, they just, what are they doing here?" I said, "They just finished their wellness class." And it was a surprise, like, really? And I, that was a moment for me where I thought, gee, you know, we really have something great going here, which I know, but it's those moments where you really appreciate that we couldn't have the quality adaptive PE without them. So, nice segue to our next agenda item.
I would agree with that, Mrs. Spinelli. I'm at the Y during the day a lot, and I run into a lot of our students there, and I think it, who are there for their classes, and they're having a ball, and it's always nice to see. And thank you, Sue. That video was fabulous.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me a chance to share, because I think the kids, this is something that's really important to them and their families, and I think it's, it's really, it's done some nice things for community and family, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
There were a lot of students in that video who were familiar.
I know that one in particular was very familiar. Who was that, who was that familiar-looking guy, Joe?
Thank you, Sue. Thank you very much. So, why don't we segue right into the YMCA partnership?
So, this is something, Ed and I, or the Y folks and I, have an opportunity to meet on a fairly regular, irregular basis, I'll call it. And I think all of you know Ed Hurley, who's the President of the Hockamock Area YMCA, and I will say, nationwide, well-known as a very strong president of a YMCA family. Patrick Murphy is our Invencis Foxborough Branch Executive Director. A little bit new to me, so we just have met this year. And we thought it'd be, Ed and I were talking, we thought it'd be a great idea, because this is another hidden gem of Foxborough, is all the partnerships at the Y. I think we hear about snippets of it, but to really understand the whole picture of what goes on in our partnership, can't thank them enough. So, I'm just going to turn it over to them, because they have a presentation that they're going to show you about our partnerships, then we continue to work on them. So, Ed, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Deb. And thanks for having us here tonight. Sue?
Thank you.
We're very proud to partner with Sue and the great work that she does. And, you know, that's when we came to Foxborough many years ago, the YMCA with the first phase, and then we just celebrated our fifth anniversary of the expanded, you know, Foxborough branch. And the way we were welcomed to this community from day one, with open arms, and certainly the school committee and superintendents have all been very supportive of the work we're doing. And we're just so excited at what we've been able to accomplish together, and the partnership that we have with the Foxborough Public Schools is one that we treasure, we value. And as Deb said, we were just talking, said it would be great to just spend a few minutes, a really opportunity for me, is just to say thank you. I mean, thanks for being so open to working together and the things we've been able to do, and I think the impact we've been able to have on kids and families in this community because of working together. So, we're going to walk through and really take a quick look back, and I will try to do this quickly, I'm going to really try to hit the treetops here, I gave you a copy of the PowerPoint with some of the numbers in it, I get a little bit excited, so I'm going to try to stay on, you know, stay on message here, so I don't go off too much. So, we're going to take a look back in terms of things that have happened, and then what we're doing, working together today, and then we'll take a quick look ahead at some of the opportunities that we believe that we have. So, just from a YMCA standpoint, you know, for us, it's all about, you know, meeting emerging community needs, and that's one of the things, what Sue just talked about, is one of the ways we've been able to do that together. For us, we talk about three areas that are our primaries, a focus, youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility, and try to make that part of everything that we do at the YMCA. And then as we look back, you know, our Healthy Futures Initiative was really the programming around, it started, you know, back in 2007, we first started, and in 2009, Foxborough was one of the first systems, communities that really embraced the safe routes to school. And we started that in 2009, and over, and you see the numbers up there over the past five years, you know, over 2,200 Foxborough students have been part of that program. So, the whole message behind the Healthy Futures is to get kids making good choices around exercise, nutrition, early in life, and hope, the hope that that becomes, you know, lifelong skills that they'll continue. The Nutrition Detectives Program, one that we're so excited about, that's all third graders, and we've been doing it here in Foxborough since 2010. This was where we piloted it. And that was, you know, through our partnership with the schools. We now are doing that in 13 communities that we serve, so it's, you know, getting kids to, again, really help their parents to make some of the good choices, reading labels, and now we've had, you know, more than 750 kids from Foxborough have participated in this program. The Stop &amp; Shop Mini Grant Program is one that we're very proud of. Stop &amp; Shop has been a big proponent of our Healthy Futures Initiative, and it's given us funding, probably this is our fifth year. And one of the things we do that's a little bit different is we take some of that funding and turn it around and re-grant it. And it's been a program that has really, you know, made a difference in a lot of communities, you can see here. Over $12,500 has come to Foxborough through 10 different grants over the years, including the innovative one that, you know, Foxborough did with Dr. Cotrimoni. So, something that, again, continues to be replicated, and we're having some, some real positive impact through that program. Couple of other quick ones, you know, here we are in Foxborough High School, and it was, Sue referenced, you know, having the Leadership and Wellness Center here, and I'd like to obviously acknowledge, you know, Larry and Judy Harrington, who really helped to make that possible. And this was a dream that, you know, working with the schools that we came up with. 2010, we started it, it staffed, you know, five days a week. You know, here, the whole idea is to try to connect and engage students, again, around that healthy lifestyle choice. One of the other things that we've done since the first year, and it's grown into 13 students this year serving as interns, so they're getting some experience, you know, in the program, and hopefully that's going to help them down the road as well, but it's helping us. 3,300 student visits a year is what we're recording, and that's only in, at the time that we're staffing the center. So, the center is obviously open for programming at other times for the school, and, you know, including for the athletic teams. And starting in 2010, we did a Leaders Club program here at the high school, and we've had an average of 12 kids a year in this kind of values-based program that focuses on community service and getting kids involved. So, another piece that's come out of our partnership here at the high school. Another thing, the location, when we were fortunate enough, our friends at Invencis, Mel Schneider, you know, donated this land for us for a YMCA, we knew right away the proximity to the center of town, but we also had Foxborough High School right down the street, and the middle school right next door. So, we've got a pretty well-worn path from, you know, from Ahern to the YMCA, and you'll see, we average 45 kids a day that will come to the YMCA and do things at the Maryland Rodman Youth and Leadership Center, and then transition to other activities at the YMCA as well. But it's become a very popular spot and very heavily used by young people from the Ahern Middle School. The Darkness to Light Program, we've been doing for several years now, and I want to say publicly, one of the first communities to step forward and really embrace this and partner with us was Foxborough. And, you know, Deb and Chief O'Leary were two proponents from day one, and they've embraced it, continues to be a model that, quite frankly, we're sharing with other YMCA's across the country, what is happening here in Foxborough. And so, Deb, publicly, a big thank you to you for all that you've done in this very important area. So, it's about, you know, educating adults around child sexual abuse prevention and what we can do. And all of the Foxborough High School, or all of the Foxborough, all of the, all of the school staff have been trained in darkness to light, and it's been, the most exciting part is, they've been trained by your own staff. You had staff at the school trained, now they've been able to provide the training. And then just recently, all substitute teachers now are getting trained, which is the first we've ever heard of that happening anywhere. So, again, Foxborough was way ahead on this one. And then one of the other things that I just mentioned is the Foxborough High School swim team. One of the things that was important for us when we completed our expansion was to, again, as part of the partnership, to make that amazing facility available to the schools as the home pool for the swim team. And since 2009, the Warriors have been using the Spear Family Aquatic Center, and I think it's been one of those win-wins for all of us, so.
I don't know if we'd have a swim team without that.
I don't think so, no.
Right.
And we're very excited to be able to do that.
We wouldn't have a, we started the swim team when, because of that partnership, and I don't know how we would have one without it.
And one of our great community friends here, you know, I remember even the first year, you know, bought the uniforms to get the program started, so.
That's right.
So, a couple of other quick things I'll just mention and turn it over to Patrick, is our Adventures in Respect Program, which is a program that's evolved from our Ropes Course Program. It's a program that seventh graders from the Ahern School go through. It's around team building, problem solving, and the other thing that we've added is, you know, respecting and understanding differences around the anti-bullying focus that we're trying to provide for that. Family Nights, we've been doing that since 2010 for the Igoe School, bringing families to the Y free of charge. And then, as, you know, Sue mentioned, did a great presentation, but we're very proud to have Sue in the adaptive PE classes coming to the YMCA as part of our integration initiative. We've got a major focus on, you know, providing opportunities for kids at our YMCA and other places in the community to be able to participate alongside their typically developing peers, and we're really, really proud of that program. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Patrick, who joined us in the last year as our new Executive Director of our Invencis Branch, and he'll tell you about some of the things we're doing today.
Great. Well, thank you, Ed, and thank you for having me as well tonight. We are coming up on a year, April, so... coming up on a year, April. So as Deb had mentioned, I am a newer face, but developing that relationship. And could not thank the community and everyone involved with that for making it a welcoming atmosphere. We are doing a boatload of work current day. And a lot does fall back on the history and continuation of it. And, you know, one of the ones, we're right here as well, as Ed had mentioned, in our Harrington Leadership and Wellness Center. I was able to really take a look at it a couple of weeks ago in action. And inaction is a great word for it because as soon as those bells hit, the kids are heading right in there. And I really have to give kudos to my team director, Dan DeMars, who has been a huge part of that Wellness Center. And not only on the wellness end, but really the leadership piece of that. And very proud to say how he works with his interns throughout the year, whether it's a project based around nutrition, strength training, overall programming within there, but getting them to take pride in their center, in their school, in their community. And it's just really a great, you know, ground floor opportunity for these kids to, you know, see leadership in action. Our Darkness to Light, also as Ed has, Ed has mentioned, we're very proud that not only Foxborough has really taken the lead with that, but also that public school staff are trained and authorized trainers in that. Most recently, the substitute teachers have been trained within there and we look to continue to evolve that as well. One of our newer programs is our school-based enrichment programming over at the Borough School. Ashley Phillips, our family director, is having a lot of fun with this. And I try to see who has more fun, the kids or Ashley with this. But we're actually offering two times a week, healthy cooking classes for the kids. And whether it's focusing on a certain vegetable one day or a specific recipe, the kids are getting their hands messy, but coming out with an end product that not only they're enjoying, but the families at home. And, you know, I, I look at this program and, you know, really wish something like this was around when I was going through school because it's not just about putting the recipes together, making something in there, but learning what goes into your food. And again, another offshoot of our Nutrition Detectives and other programs that we are running there.
Yeah, we're very interested in expanding that to a couple of the other schools. So, you and I are meeting in the next week or two, so it's on my list.
Absolutely. We look forward to that as well. Continuing with our integration initiative, and, you know, for me, for my first summer with Foxborough Y, I was able to see our inclusion programming through our summer camps. Now, not only do we offer our traditional summer camp, but we also offer our traditional and teen summer camp for those with special needs. And as Sue had mentioned before, the partnership with the Foxborough Public Schools and really being able to work with the extended school year program has been a benefit and a win-win for all involved in there. It's a bright spot of my day and especially during the summer, no matter how hot it is, to get out there, see the kids enjoying and really taking full advantage of our campgrounds out there. Safe routes to school, we are continuing and proudly continuing. Each year, we do participate in International Walk to School Day. This past year, over 450 students participated. I was able to go on the Taylor side this year and the neighborhoods, I think, are getting that much more competitive each year to see who can have the most parents out there, school, school pride and school spirit.
That's great.
So costumes, you know, the whole nine yards when it comes to that. Our Nutrition Detectives Program is continuing and continuing strong with 182 third graders this year that are, that will participate in there. And this is our fourth year of the initiatives, as we were mentioning before. And also, you know, our school gardens. Each elementary school this year was awarded a Stop and Shop Mini Grant and they will be able to build their own school garden. So we're very happy with that. We're excited. And as the snow is melting, we're really getting excited to get that going out there.
That's going to be really awesome.
Oh, we, we can't wait. And a little bit of a look ahead. So, with Darkness to Light, as I mentioned, we look forward into really continuing, not only to be a partner, but also really see the Foxborough Public Schools as the innovator that they are. I can mention where I've come from, a few Y's, you know, Foxborough Public Schools, as well as the Foxborough Y with Darkness to Light. It is recognized nationally and it's a great partnership to have, a very powerful partnership to have in there. A very unique look ahead and not too far around the corner, Thursday, May 8th, 7:00 PM. And I have to thank Foxborough Public Schools and the use of the auditorium for this, but Elizabeth Smart will be coming for a very powerful presentation that evening.
It's going to be amazing.
It's geared for individuals 12 years old and up, based on content. And tickets are on sale at all of our YMCA's as well. And really just going through, not only her story, but the connection that she has with our aquatics director within Foxborough, it's just amazing not only how small of a world it is, but just the relationships that you meet along the way. So we're very happy to be able to bring this to the community of Foxborough for what will be a very powerful evening.
It's going to be amazing and outstanding. I did put the, the letter from you in their packet tonight, so they have some more information about that and tickets as well. I can't wait for that.
With the Harrington Leadership and Wellness Center, we have put together a task force to recommend enhancements to the experience. And Deb and I, we have met, I thank you on that. And we're getting together as a team with the YMCA first and then to get together with Foxborough staff as well and really take it to the next level. And, you know, I think it's a, a great relationship that we have right now, but just in true Y fashion, we're always looking to improve the experience and make it the best for the students and the staff involved in there. With workplace wellness, we're always looking to explore opportunities for the staff. And that includes our evidence-based chronic disease programs. We're very proud that we will be taking on, and we've started our YMCA diabetes prevention programming, as well as other chronic disease programming in there. So we're very excited to continue, you know, working with the staff in regards to our offerings there. With family-focused programming, as we mentioned before, whether it be family nights or appreciation days, getting the students over to our school, both for the families, the staff, the students, we're looking to always continue exploring that as well as doing more. We have a beautiful facility and once the grounds do thaw out, we have beautiful grounds as well. So we want to continue working together with that partnership as well. And then lastly, continue to support school-based wellness programming. So through our Y's Healthy Futures Initiative. And as we mentioned, that's our Nutrition Detectives, our school gardens within there, our Safe, Safe, yeah, Safe Roots to School Day as well. So, we look forward to all of these. I look forward to continuing with this and just offering more. Thank you.
So just in closing, and then happy to answer any questions you might have. Again, the purpose of being here tonight is really to say thank you, you know, for being such a, you know, proactive and innovative partner with the YMCA. And it's a relationship that we value very much. And a couple of things I just wanted to say, that just as new emerging needs come forward, that you become aware of, if there's ways we can work together to help to address those, that's what we're here for. Say literally right down the street, we are literally right down the street. And, and one of the other things that I would ask you, you know, all to do in your roles is, you know, you may be familiar with our, the YMCA and our doors are open to everyone regardless of whether they can pay or not. Our Reach Out for Youth and Families campaign is going to be kicking off later this month. And I just say to all of you, if you become aware of an individual or family or families that could benefit from a YMCA experience, it's confidential and I can assure you, we'll be there to support and to help them. So, you know, please let us know how we can help individuals as well. And then just, you know, continue to utilize as, utilize us as a resource for, for anything that, you know, we may be able to work together on. And then, you know, the door's always open. Come by, visit. And again, you know, many thanks for, you know, what we've been able to do together for so many years and I'm really excited about the future.
You are thanking us, but I feel that it's, we are the people who should be thanking you.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, Deb. I mean, what a, what a great partnership. I mean, I feel our community is so fortunate. And I think that we've had very strong leadership in terms of our administrators, from Chris Martis to Debbie Spinelli, who's partnered with you and has kind of led the way. And we are certainly appreciative of everything that you've brought to Foxborough. And I'm so excited to see more of what's going to happen in the future. So, some great programs out there for, for families. And I think this is a great opportunity for families that may not know about some of, all the resources that are available at the Y. So hopefully we'll get some press, a bit of press, yeah, for that.
A couple of other ideas too, in the works.
I'm sure.
Always, always.
We, we have a joke that, when, seriously, I'll tell a little bit longer story, but when, when Ed, I've told this a time, but it's, it's the truth, but it's also a joke. When, when Ed calls and says, "I have an idea," my response is, "I'm in." I don't even know what it is. And, and that's what I actually said when, when you called several years ago about the Darkness to Light. I say, "I'm in." And I say, "No, what's the idea?" And, but that truly is the way a relationship works. Sometimes people around us will say, "Oh no," like, but, but that's, that's really the way it's been because I have such trust and faith in the YMCA and it goes so far back. I mean, under Ed's leadership, it's exceeded anyone's expectation of what a Y brings to the school and the community. But I'll tell a quick story about how far it goes. So, my husband and I moved to Foxborough 33 or four years ago. And say 33 years ago, he set up playing basketball at the North Attleboro Y, long before Foxborough had one. And then I told him to sign me up for anything. Our first child had been born. I said, "Sign me up for anything they have." So he signed me up for a class. I never left for 18 years. In fact, I, within six months, I was teaching classes there. I was like a part-time Y rat. And our, my, our children went to preschool there. And when our son had half-day kindergarten, remember that in those days and y'all, I trusted no one with my son, because I was going back to work at the time. And he was going to be in half daycare and half preschool, kindergarten. And my neighbor and I signed our two kids up. We're going to preschool for two years at the Y for their daycare center. And I think they were the only two from Foxborough. And every single day with half-day kindergarten, they got a minibus and Y, someone from the Y drove our two children to kindergarten in Foxborough and back. And because I trusted no one more than them. And so, that's how far back it goes. So, I just can't say enough about them. And under Ed's leadership, it's unbelievable.
We don't go as far back with the Y, but we, the Foxborough Y wasn't open when, when we moved to town 13 years ago. So we started in North Attleboro as well, but I'm sitting here realizing how much the Y has impacted my life and my children's life and how many activities we've participated in. We're just so lucky to have you here in town. And I, I can't wait to see what's coming next. So, thank you.
I was going to say, Tina, if we get invited back, I can't wait to come back next year and share with everybody.
Absolutely. Well, there'll be many more ideas than at first.
Oh, there will be, there will be.
Now, each year that you do your walk to school, it grows in momentum. So the second year, it was when Ed was here, but you weren't, Patrick. Chris Martis, who was then student superintendent, said, "Oh, I'm going to go and I'm, I'm going to walk to, find something. I'm going to walk to school with them." Well, that day, it was pouring down rain. And somebody who was delightfully clever at the Foxborough Reporter happened to print a colored paper in that particular week's edition of the Foxborough Reporter. And here were several, there were teachers, there were students, and there were parents walking with umbrellas. And Chris Martis with his window rolled down, looking out, encouraging.
I have walked with Dr. Martis and Mrs. Spinelli and Mr. Gardner before. And our principals, I actually saw Mr. Regan running to catch up with everybody this year.
That's been fun. I do it this past year.
It's a good one.
I stand out in my corner.
It's a great program.
Pick me up at the corner.
Ed, I just want to thank you for your leadership too. You've been a great asset to our community. And, and I appreciate the word you opened with, that you quote, "Treasure and value the partnership." And I think that's aspirational for us to, to think that we could have a partner as important as the Y that treasures and values our partnership. I think that's a great objective for us to set with all our partners. So, thank you for leading the way.
Well, I think when we look at the impact that, you know, collectively and together we're able to have, you know, that's really what it's all about for us. And we realized a long time ago, we're going to be much more effective if we're working together with others to make things happen. And very few folks that we've worked as effectively with is the Foxborough Public Schools. So, it's been a, it's been a lot of fun. And I appreciate, you know, again, the welcoming nature of this community to our YMCA from day one.
And we have some spinoffs. I, I mentioned to you that Paula Quattramoni, Dr. Quattramoni, BU, that was an amazing opportunity through the Stop and Shop Mini Grant, YMCA Mini Grant, to start that nutrition education project. But now we have a second project going with her that doesn't, isn't funded by them. It's, it's a Kickin' Kitchen, the middle school nutrition project. So, we have another project going with her that's research-based, that started because of our mini grant from you. So, there are even more seeds out there or ripples in the pond, if you will, that people aren't even aware of.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We look forward to you coming back again.
For sure. We will. Thanks.
We'll have another idea.
I'm in.
I'm in. We're in.
I'm in. There was only one more last time.
Okay, and now we're going to move into, again, for wellness.
Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Correction, effective date for high school wellness requirement, Ms. Spinelli?
Yes, as the committee remembers, when we had last month, Mrs. Myers-Pakla and Ms. White from the guidance department of the high school here to talk about the wellness requirement and the changes, we, you were, you made a vote based on a memo that you received from Mrs. Myers-Pakla. And she called to my attention that all of our talk and our planning meant the current sophomores going into junior year. And she had just made a minor typo, should have said beginning with the class of 2016. She was calling the class, the sophomores, the class of 2017, but they're really 2016. So, just to be sure we have all of our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, that it probably needs to be revoted. That would be my recommendation. And it's also an opportunity for you to ask me more questions about how things are coming along. I'd be certainly open to, to questions.
Have there been any updates or changes that we should be?
We've been working on it a lot. I had a really great conversation with a parent and community member today that's, that's really done a lot of research. She's absolutely spot-on with all of her information about, that we get from the Department of Ed, got the same information I got, which is it has to be, it has to be instructional in nature. She had a really good point about, agrees that in junior, senior year, that it's less time in wellness and we're going to put a spin on it in personal fitness, which is great. Our biggest remaining, we have a few hurdles, but they're, they're smaller hurdles, not the big leap hurdles, I'd call it. But we agree on the information and how things are coming along. Going forward, once we get past this first time, we'll have all of the glitches worked out. So what I would say is the incoming freshmen, for example, who know there's going to be a requirement, will plan accordingly. I'd say that the biggest glitch that we've had, that Diane and I have been discussing both during vacation weekend and this morning, and I spoke to the parent and solidified it for me, so it was really a helpful conversation, is that the students who may have gone with a slightly different course selection in ninth and 10th grade because they wanted to participate in jazz, they were making those course selections based on the information we were giving them at the time, not knowing what was coming for when they were juniors. So, we had a long conversation today. We originally were going to meet Wednesday, which was midweek to see, because all of the students are meeting with guidance this week to course selection. So, they provided me with a lot of information and data. Mr. Gardner and I also went up to the high school and had an opportunity to review that. So, in general, 80% of the kids in any given year are going to be able to schedule it without real, just in a standard way. And it really won't be any, it would just be easier to schedule. About 20% of the kids require what we call hand scheduling, but they would anyway because they're making different choices. They're choosing courses a little bit more aggressively in terms of the academic future. Sometimes they're choosing to double up on music or even triple up on music or other types of things. So we have, the high school provided us with information on all the possible scenarios of the types of students and the choices they're making and how they'd fit this in. So, like anything else, it's a choice that students make. So, I'll give you an example. Sometimes a student who wants to double up on the sciences in senior year because they know they're going to major in something with the sciences, will choose to drop band, for example. Or they may choose to drop a language. Or, so kids are always making choices. So this isn't going to be any different from that, is that they will get, obviously, input from their parents, input from the guidance department, and they will make their choices. The, the one thing that we agree needed to be addressed, and we did address that today, is are those students who made different choices, maybe they took a half, a half of what they were supposed to either in ninth or 10th grade because they were going to make up the other half in junior or senior when they didn't have the wellness requirement. And those students now are in a, a little bit of a pickle because they now have to take the junior requirement and a little bit of makeup. So, what we decided today is that for those few students that are affected by that, and there are really only a few, that we, they did take wellness in freshman year or sophomore year. And since the state doesn't really require a certain amount of hours for physical education, it has to be enough, you know, it can't just be one or two meetings. But we're, we're going to waive the, the other part of the makeup requirement, as long as they took physical education. So if they, for example, if they took no physical education in ninth grade, deferring it for later, then they would have to make up half of that, which is equivalent to what the other kids are doing. If they took phys ed in ninth or 10th grade, half of maybe the requirement, which is what some kids did, then they, they, that would be waived for them because they, they would still be considered having taken four years of physical education. So I think that was the biggest honest, honest concern that parents had as their students are trying to figure out how to schedule this. I, I agree with it, as Myers-Pakla agree with it. So, we decided to just talk today and, and make that decision. And then at the end of the week, they will be able to know exactly how many students are going to not fit in quite neatly and what else they're going to do. So, for example, let's say there's a student who isn't a music student, but who wants to really challenge themselves with a lot of AP courses. And they really want their study in the middle of the day, to be able to take a break and work on some of their assignments. Then they could, any student, that student or any student with any kind of a profile, could choose a PE alternative, is what we're calling it, which is a morning class or an afternoon class twice a week for half a year. And they, and they might prefer that. There are students, and Amy gave us a good example of, of her own- There are students, and Amy gave us a good example of, of her own, um, son in another high school, who's an athlete. And he has to do strength and conditioning for his sport. So rather than stay after first activities and then stay after to do that, he could take the, uh, the PE requirement during the day and work on his strength and conditioning there, which would save on the, during the homework time. So there are a lot of kids who are gonna make choices that fit their desires and their goals best. And, um, we think that everybody can, can fit in and, and have it managed. Um, I did bring with me, I didn't, I just printed it out today in case the committee is interested, there was an article just two weeks ago, three weeks, January thirty-first, three weeks ago, in, um, Education Week, which is the, the education newspaper across the country, about a study that links exercise with academic success. And so this is where the Department of Ed is coming from, saying students need to move, they need wellness. And so I brought that for you, but that's, that's part of the reason why this isn't a frivolous requirement. It really is based on, eh, you know, actual studies. So we, we don't disagree with that. We're just trying to figure out how do we make this work in Foxborough.
Is there one more for, would there be one extra for science?
It's, it sounds like, um,
Give me one back, please. Just someone back my way.
Um, it sounds like there's not, that there were, the actual time on requirement, eh, is the piece that's kind of a, that's not set in stone.
That's locally decided. That's right.
Right. So therefore, I think, you know, the, the, um, that's kind of where this decision-making came into play. Where that they did meet a certain, they did meet the requirement because they, they did participate. But then, um, maybe they, they're not participate, they didn't participate in the exact amount that we're now determining.
But we changed the rules, so in order, to be fair and reasonable, that seems to me an accommodation that we can make in good conscience, knowing that that's the right thing to do.
Because we also have that flexibility as well.
Right.
Okay.
So the state is pretty firm and, and, um, in, in that it has to be instructional in nature, which it was. And so that's the reason why, um, eh, you know, some of our questions about, would just participating on a sport team count? And we had thought, because it felt counted as, as an exception if you're in penalty and you don't even offer it at all, they'll, they'll let you check it off, but it doesn't count to actually provide it because it, they don't consider that instructional in nature. And the parent I spoke to today, it was very thorough, and I agree with everything she said, that that's also the advice that she was giving at it. But however, the, what you want to do individually to make yourself better at that sport will be able to count. So the flexibility that we will have with the additional position to do a little before school, a little after school, and make lots of opportunities available to students, that is going to meet their need even as an athlete. So that, that is pretty firm, instructional in nature. And simply participating in a sport, whether it's in school, outside of school, will not be enough to count by itself. Because, and then you, as you can imagine, it would be a slippery slope. Because then what if we have a student that says, "Well, I, I, I skate in Rhode Island." You know, d- we don't know that. So, so you can't, you can't count everything. So I think we, we're close to striking a good balance for most students. And I think we'll, we'll work out the smaller kinks that we're encountering. And by the end of this week, the guidance department will know exactly who still needs, you know, some hand thought scheduling. Or maybe kids will take a little bit more time to decide what they want to do.
Well, the other thing, too, you said, is instructional, uh, wellness. So again, we're hiring an, an FTE, um, an educator who is trained in this. So, which is different than, let's say, you know, maybe you are participating in something in a, in a club team or you're,
Right. They use certified teacher. They specifically said to me.
Right. So that's important for us as a, as a district to make sure that we're meeting that requirement. Okay. Well, I'm, I really, I'm glad you brought this forward because I knew there had been, you know, anything new was gonna, yeah, there are a lot of questions and anything new. And, uh, I mean, I think this is a great process that we're, that we're going through in terms of people feeling like they can come forward and there's give and take and discussion about it and trying to kind of fit the needs of, of all our students.
I feel more comfortable myself as we go along and start answering many of these questions. And some of them are individual and some of them are more philosophical, for example.
So, um, Can I just, uh,
Yeah, sure.
Make a comment? Um, so I wanna distill down, Debbie, a little bit of what you just said for the public. Because I think you just said a lot of things.
A lot.
And I wanna make sure that the public understands and, and my understanding is still accurate.
Okay.
And I'll begin by saying that you and Amy and Diana here at the high school and Maureen were very responsive to, uh, to me, as I was representing some of the community interests that I got. And I know Tina got some and some others did. So I wanna thank the staff and, and make the public aware that you guys immediately carved out time to Friday before vacation to spend a couple hours with me, and I appreciate that. And what I got out of that to, to net it out was that, first of all, this additional requirement is not gonna be every day. It's gonna be roughly two hours a week, on average, a couple days a week, a couple hours. So we're not talking about, for example, six-thirty AM, Monday through Friday.
No.
Uh, and that's a choice that, that we all are making and you all are leading, um, that complies with the state mandate for four years of PE, but doesn't require it to be every day or all year even. It's a semester of maybe a couple hours a week. So I think that's the first thing that, when I've gone back to parents after our meeting, they say, "Oh, okay. Well, that's a little different than I understood it." And then the second thing you said that I think has had good reaction from the community that I've spoken with is, this isn't group dodgeball. This is, this, and it's not PE. It's, it's lifetime fitness or, or,
Personal, it's like a personal fitness that will sustain you.
And that that has the academic component of, we're gonna teach you a life skill, whether it's weightlifting or speedwalking or yoga or zumba, whatever it is.
Stretching should be a value.
Stretching. That, that can be valued. So when people have heard that, they've also reacted real well. So I think if we can continue to go back with, to Janelle and say, you know, "We want that kind of a curriculum," I think that will mean a lot. The one thing that I have not, uh, heard back, just for you and for Amy, is that communication yet isn't getting out to the parents, at least the ones I'm talking to. And maybe you know that because we haven't done, but one of the things we had talked about was, you know, a note summarizing.
She did send that to parents during the vacation week.
All right. We, we, we need to do something more then.
Well, I think,
Or, or resend it or publish it on our website or something.
Well, here's the thing.
The parents I spoke to hadn't gotten that.
She did send, send something out during the vacation week. And I think that, eh, I think the challenge is this. High school students, and I know from my own experience, it's, it's the ninety percent of the course selection is, is the student. And that's the way it should be, because they're transitioning to a college environment. So until we get to the end of this week, when students have had an opportunity to sit in guidance and go over what their schedule is like, so the, for example, I, I know that, um, they said to you, the few students who had taken the initiative to come in and fill those appointments before vacation, ended up saying, "Oh, oh, okay. I, I get it. I can fit it in there." Because they had impressions that it was gonna interfere with an elective choice they really felt passionate about or an AP course they felt passionate about. And when they found out it wasn't going to, then they were settled down on their own thing. So I think sending more information out at this point, other than the one that she did, I think the, eh, the questions will be answered when students have that personal appointment. And I, I know that that will be the case. So that, that's when all the scheduling glitches get ironed out. Even if this had never happened, that's when all the questions about, "What are you taking next year and how is it gonna fit?" Get really answered and to their satisfaction. So I would hesitate to send anything more out to parents because it's the students that have to understand where, how this is all gonna fit in, so they can go home and say, "Oh, it didn't, it wasn't what I thought." Or, "I am able to fit it in," or, "I could fit in during the day, but I choose not to in one."
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not requesting we send anything out right away.
Okay.
But what the feedback I'm getting is, parents still don't get it. So maybe it's a survey at the end of the guidance meetings that says, "Did you understand where your resolution, or were your questions answered?" I don't know what the right answer is. I'm just giving you a status update from the sampling I'm getting.
Can I have a question about this? Are these parents that have high school students right now?
Yeah.
Okay. So they've been through the process before, of course, selection?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it usually isn't very parent-driven. I mean, I don't wanna say it that way, but I, it usually isn't. It's usually the parents confer with the child, the child goes and advocates for themselves with their scheduling appointment. And then if, if there is a concern, or sometimes your student chooses something you didn't want, then sometimes there's a call to guidance, and that's the way it works for anything. So I, I would, personally, I would hesitate to make this process any different from all the choices they always have to make every year for their scheduling. Because as you know, it can get tricky to schedule, never mind if this had never happened, it can get tricky to try to fit your puzzle pieces together. And it, that's true of every high school. So I would hesitate to make this something different than what it is routinely. It's just another challenge within the puzzle.
Right.
And I've mentioned that to the parents, that this is one more choice they have to make and the students have to make about what do they want to take. But as Katie said, this is something new, and these, you know, anytime we do something new in the curriculum, it takes a little time. So, um,
If I might jump in?
Please.
Um, I'm just thinking, as, as, which could be dangerous. But, uh, I guess we're talking here, maybe, perhaps, I mean, I know this is still new because we just voted on this a couple weeks ago. And I'm sure Janelle and her staff are still working out precisely what will be offered and, and what time of day. But maybe once they have those offerings, you know, eh, set, um, they, we, the parents, there can be a communication to the parents of, you know, these will be the options for personal fitness choices that, I, I don't know, say the wellness center will be open in staff for, um, weight training during, you know, periods X, Y, and Z, or two, three, and four.
And it doesn't, and it does not, They will have made a choice. I, I wanna, I wanna remind, I wanna remind people if they're watching at home.
I am confused.
The freshman and sophomore requirements have not changed. They're gonna take what they've always taken.
Right.
The students we're talking about are going to be juniors and seniors.
Right.
When we really do count on them to be responsible and make their choices. And, and I, I, I don't want to suddenly give any impression that the juniors and seniors are not capable of making this decision on their own. But this is the one part of their whole complicated schedule, they need parental, more parent, because I trust the students more than that. And I think what's gone on before this, certainly there's been some confusion and there's been some mixed messages, and I would even say misinformation. But I think it's because it is new, there were some rumors going around, and there's a perce- there were some perceptions. And, and different ways it was explained did cause confusion. I totally agree with that. But I do trust our students, once they get the information, have their appointment, to understand all the options available and to be able to go home and explain it with their parents and come back and make their best decision or change their decision.
And all those options are being explained to them right now.
Absolutely.
So they're not just picking a time slot when they're meeting with guidance. They're picking, I guess I'm just,
They're picking what they think initially, and then they can go back and change it if they want with further thought. It's, it's no different than any annual course selection process. It just feels very different because this one aspect is new, but it actually isn't different. So I, that's what I wanna emphasize, I guess.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ted, to you, to your credit, um, could you, could you tell me again what, what was of great relief to me based on, uh, public feedback I also got? How that flexibility with the existing student base in this sort of delta that we're in right now? Could you just say one more time what that worked for me?
Sure. So if you had,
It sounded great.
A freshman or sophomore student this year,
Okay.
then they were told when they entered, and they picked their course selections a year ago, that they could defer part or all of their wellness requirement if they wanted to double up, say, on music and jazz and, and a jazz choir. You know? And some of them did that, rightly so, because we offered that option. And now that they know when they go into junior year and senior, they're gonna have to take a wellness piece, whichever one that they opt, they, they probably would've made different choices a year ago or two years ago had they known and had we known that things were going to change. So for those students, we don't wanna change the rules and be unfair and say, "Well, that's just the way it go." So if they took wellness, even if it was a half of what everybody else took, we're gonna waive that for those students who are operating under different rules as freshmen and sophomores over the last two years.
So it's not abrupt?
Right. So we'll say, you took PE, it wasn't the full thing. And yes, we told you, you're gonna have to make that up in junior. But now that you're gonna be taking a junior class, PE requirement, we're gonna call it close enough. So up until today, that's what they were told, is that they have to do the junior requirement and make up whatever half or quarter that they dropped. And now we're not gonna do that. It doesn't seem reasonable.
I'm really glad that,
Yeah, that's comforting. The soft landing is comforting.
Right.
Especially given the confusion over the, the date and, and what our vote was. I did go back and look at our meetings, the one that, um, the first meeting that Diana and Janelle came. And we really, it wasn't clear from that meeting which class. We didn't talk about the, the class number.
Right.
We really did. She, she, there really was no, we talked about the good that will come out of it, but it was not clear. And then in the second meeting, we kept reading from her memo that said, and as you know, there was, you know, people pay attention. This is a lesson, I think, to all of us, to be very careful. Um, everybody makes mistakes, but,
We were using phrases like, "current sophomores" and "class of 2017," which didn't match.
Well, right. Well, I'm not even, I'm not sure about current sophomores. I mean, we kept repeatedly saying the class of 2017, which,
That's what was being said by guidance when they met with parents on that, on that, um, curriculum, uh, the course selection night.
Right. So we had a disconnect, absolutely.
But I think those are the things we're really being careful to work out.
Yeah.
And, and not be unfair, or certainly be, you know, take a reasonable approach.
Well, it sounds like you and your team have been very responsive to that. And, um,
Will continue to be.
And continue to be, and you'll continue to come back if we need more clarification on, on items. I'm certainly very happy to hear that, that those students that were told that they didn't need to do something now have been given, you know, the green light, that they don't need to worry about making something up because that is obviously, you know, very concerning. So let's, um, we, you need a revote.
Yeah, are there any more questions that you have or?
I, I'm, I'm not done with my point, but I'll defer it from the top.
Well, I thought, I felt you weren't, so I wanted to.
That's why you turned to me?
Yes.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I agree with you. We treat our, we want our students, especially our upperclassmen, to be responsible. And I'm not proposing or advocating we change a process. But I think parents ultimately, the fact that they're engaged is good.
Yes.
So maybe it's not a letter, and I'm not, wasn't advocating a letter. I was just making the point that there's still communication that is unclear. And I know you're working through this. And to Tina's point, maybe it's not a letter, as Tina said, maybe it's just a posting on our website that we could point parents to that say, "This is the curriculum." And we don't have to take an action now. I wasn't looking for an action now. I was giving you kind of just updated feedback on what I'm hearing, and I'm hearing a subset. But I just think that it's still as unclear as to why. So maybe we do a checkpoint after we've had all the guidance meetings, after all the students have had the guidance, and see, just see where we are.
Well, we have a meeting a week from tonight, I just realized.
That's true.
So by the end of this week, we'll really know better where our students stand and what questions we still have and what, what some of these smaller decisions or whatever we're, we're making. And I, I would, you know, be happy under, on the matters next week to tell you where, where we are. And if we still think communication is necessary, we can figure that out.
Yeah, as I say, the parents like the things that, as I've explained them, based on the feedback and the discussions. That, that's great. They just aren't hearing that back yet. I said, I said, you know, have you had, has your student had the guidance meeting? Was that explained to you? And they said, "No, that's not the message we're getting back."
So, okay, but I'm gonna be really concrete here. Is there, is there, there's no, um, reason why a parent can't pick up the phone and call the guidance department?
Well, they are.
And speak directly to them. And I think if they're not feeling like they're getting specific answers, then, you know, we can, we can go down a different path. But I think that, um, if, if any parent has an, has a question when they, when the child comes back with the courses that they've chosen, um, that they should pick up the phone and call guidance about that.
And they are.
Yeah. And I, I, I think that it just, I'm glad you said that because that, that sort of hints to one of my hesitations, which is that part of the confusion has been, when there's program of studies night, the different guidance councils, what they were saying to parents, what Ms. Myers-Packler and Ms. Erskine were saying here, what we were saying at this table, what was then said individually or what kids were saying to each other. I think there've been too many people trying to communicate a very complicated message. So my preference would be just to let the guidance councils do what they do best, which is answer those personal, this is a very personal decision. So let them answer that for the kids, and let's see where we are at the end of the week because that's the place to get answers. And so my hesitancy, to your point, is, is too many of us who aren't really involved in that process, myself included, to try to be correcting misperceptions or educating people. Because the, the, the education or the satisfaction will come when they actually know what their own personal schedule looks like. And that's the way it is since the beginning of time. So that's my hesitancy, is I don't wanna mess up the works.
Well, I'm not sure what could be said at this point, as, you know, in a general way. Because like you said, it does come down, you, you know, each, each parent wants to make sure that their child is taking the classes that they need to take and they're meeting the requirements. And if there's some kind of certain special stipulations, they wanna make sure that those are being attended to in the context of, of this new requirement. So, I, I mean, again, I, I think if we give it some time, but certainly tell them if they wanna be part of this process now, they can pick up the phone and call with guidance. I mean, they don't have to wait until their child comes home.
Right. I think there may have been too many cooks in the soup. Or is that, no, kitchen.
Cooks in the broth.
Too many cooks in the kitchen. What is that phrase, anyway?
Does more discussion, though, fall on, on whether people are feeling comfortable with this revote? Because we do need to revote this.
No.
Okay. All right. But do you, do you feel like you've had an opportunity?
Yeah, again, I wasn't asking for an action. I'm providing feedback as to what I'm hearing. So I just think we, I think, I think we should continue to take the pulse, that's all.
That's awesome. Yeah, I agree. Okay, so we need to then to take a revote from the previous vote. And what do we, we wanna say that we're accepting?
You went to me worded exactly like the previous vote.
Yeah, which is-
Except to say, beginning with, as you see in bold, beginning with the class of 2016.
So-
Which is the current sophomore.
And said the class of 2017 previously.
So we need a motion to request a budget increase to, to the wellness department?
Correct the vote. Do you have that motion from last time? That's a lot to ask. Okay. So to correct the previous motion, I don't want to try to state it exactly.
You know, we have our meeting-
I know, that's what I was going to say.
To interrupt, but we could use those.
Let's go back.
I'm not, I'm just looking through them. I don't see a motion about-
Page three in the top.
Page three.
It's actually-
Okay. Oh, perfect. It's right there.
Approve the high school PE requirement increase from two years to four years effective with the class of 2016.
Yes. It's the second motion there.
Yes. So-
All motions, actually.
Yeah, we had to have, well, the first one was the, just from the year, and then the other one was the requirements.
Two to four years effective with the class of 2016.
Both motions.
Yeah.
Yes, make a correction in the date so that it reads accurately.
So let's, do we have a motion then?
I will make that motion.
For the first one, to approve the high school PE requirement increase from two to four years effective with the class of 2016.
Sixteen.
And this is a re, this is a, we can stipulate that this is a-
Corrected.
It's a housekeeping issue with the date being, right?
Correction for the effective date.
Correcting, it's a correction of the effective date.
Okay. So motion second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, five zero. And now another motion to increase the requirement from two to four years of PE in high school, which will mean an increase in the number of required credits for students from 6.5 to 6.75 each year, beginning with class of 2016.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five. Deb, are you going, thank you, five zero. All right.
We'll continue tomorrow.
Yes, please. We, we do need feedback. We do need more feedback.
And I appreciate it. And the person I spoke to today, I don't know if people like me to say the names on TV, but you know who you are. Very helpful conversation and helped me.
I appreciate a, a parent taking the initiative and, and, you know, bringing forth that information. All right. Strategic plan mid-year update, Ms. Vannelli.
I am going to turn this over to Dr. Burdus. So let you know, be a sec at the next part. So we're going to do a little tag team. She's going to tell you where we are on the current strategic plan, which, as you know, is nearing the end of its third year. And, and we'll go from there. So Amy?
So as we end this plan at the end of the three years, our first objective, which was to continue to offer a curriculum that's rigorous and dynamic and promote high level achievement for our students. We had a number of goals there, and we've talked a lot about this as far as the baseline and benchmarks report. But with three-year goals, we wanted to see where we were with the goals we set three years ago. And when we look at those in relation to MCAS or AP or SAT, we've exceeded those goals.
It's good news.
It is good news. It, it really is. And in, in the middle of that, we've had things thrown in that have changed, where we have the MCAS and now transitioning where we're field testing the park. And there's been a lot of changes, but at the same time, it's really good news. When we look at wanting to expand participation for student achievement in extracurricular activities, we've had a lot of teaching and learning highlights where we've been able to highlight the programs, the really strong extracurricular programs. Even just here in the last week, the Scholastic Art Awards. We've reached the highest number yet with 25 Scholastic Art Awards.
Yes, you'll be seeing that in upcoming meeting. Last year was 22, which was the highest number. And so it's a little preview of exciting news coming.
Yes. So when we look at that, whether it's the academic, whether it's the arts, all of those programs, we're really pleased to see that, you know, we set goals that were rigorous three years ago. We've been able to meet those goals and then exceed those in many of the areas. As far as the strategies to go about meeting those goals, just some things to highlight here. The data system, which was our own data warehouse, if you will, for looking at student assessments. We have, as you know, tons of assessment because it really does take a lot to look at student achievement and that we've been able to implement that this year as far as looking at student progress over time. And that's been a huge initiative and we continue as part of response to intervention and looking at our students, where they were before us and where they go afterwards. So that's been a, a big process this year. We will continue. We have our curriculum cycle that's continued. Wellness, we've talked a lot about wellness. And social studies. Those are two of the curriculum reviews that are going on right now. They're going really well. A lot's being done in those areas. And professional development to really maintain strong professional development programs. We had a professional development committee meeting this afternoon. And we were debriefing basis on the January PD day and looking at all of our feedback that came from all of those sessions. And really, the, the message that came back through all of those sessions was the strong collaboration and collegiality and the focus on student work and assessment and where we're going with students. And that really came out strong. And that we have strong offerings in choice. We have four onsite graduate courses that are taking place this year with possibly a fifth, based on the number of people enrolled in the math course that's taking place at the elementary level. So we have-
I was so excited by that. I was like, that's amazing.
It's amazing. It really is.
Do other districts do anything like that?
Not to be able to hold this many onsite.
No, I was going to say.
No, especially for a district our size. We have, I'm taking the Understanding by Design course right now with a number of our teachers. We have 29 people enrolled in that course. And we have Allison Mello teaching a K-2 math course with third grade teachers, some of them saying, can I still take the course? I know it's K-2. And we've allowed them to take the course, but yet she's looking to see if she can offer the three to five course this summer. And then we have a writing course and a readers writers workshop course that will be offered onsite this summer. So really strong professional development opportunities for teachers. And that doesn't even count all of the courses they're taking, whether they're in their own master's programs, doctoral programs even with teachers, and that they're taking outside of the district.
I think that's one of the things Foxborough has historically done is that what we do for onsite courses are really focused on the priorities of the district. So it's not just about offering courses that are convenient, but are focused on, so we do want on behalf of our teachers to offer local, low, you know, low cost to them opportunities, but for us to be able to craft them so they're focused on the priorities of the district really helps bring everybody together. And I'll just pass on Dr. Roberg, who's teaching the Understanding by Design course, who teaches 21. Recently has been saying to Amy that it's the most talented group of educators he's ever had in a class. Not surprised.
Yay.
He just keeps saying unbelievable things about them.
And, and they are.
So it's good to know from somebody outside who teaches everywhere.
So moving to objective two, which was to continue to strengthen school culture, ensuring that students, staff, and all stakeholders feel valued, safe, and have a voice. Looking at our goals under that particular objective, a lot of that really focused on collecting baseline data and working with K-12 insight for those culture and climate surveys and taking that information and really making a difference within the schools. And we've had that data for a number of years now. We will launch that survey for parents, staff, and students in March, actually around March 17. That survey will launch again to continue seeking that feedback, which has really been important for us as a system. The educator evaluation, which we've talked a lot about as well, which is, you know, a really big change for educators across the state. A lot of work and time has gone into that. We have our team of 18 teachers. It's 12 teachers and six administrators on that group that have been together for three years. We just had the results of our survey come back. We had three surveys last year, really trying to kind of dipstick, if you will, what's the current level of implementation, where teachers are feeling with that, because it really is a huge change for them. And what we found with the results of the survey that just came back, that teachers really feel comfortable with the evaluators, with really knowing the rubric. There's 33 elements on this rubric that they have to provide evidence for. But with all that we've put upon them and with principals and evaluators, we were really happy to see that, that we had a great participation rate for the survey, which was really important, and that the majority of them truly understand the rubric and they're really valuing the feedback they're getting from these multiple, multiple observations from their evaluator coming into their classrooms. So that was huge.
So kind of a two-part question there is, are you getting feedback? And do you, are you finding the feedback helpful? So we're asking a lot of perceptions. Do you feel comfortable having open and honest dialogue if you're evaluated? To what extent? So that's most important to us, is that not just to have a new evaluation system, but to have it really result in more meaningful professional dialogue across the district. And so far, we've had great, great feedback from educators saying it's, it's very hard, but yes, we're, we're doing it and we, we do feel that we have better conversations about teaching. So.
I think that's huge. It's not just a process that they're just trying to get through and just to do it, to say they've done it, but they're actually utilizing it in a positive way. So that's, I think that says a lot.
Our third objective, to prepare students for the skills for the 21st century. We've talked a lot about this in district where we're really wanting to get away from that buzzword 21st century learners, where it is 2014. And, and we have as, as a, really as educators, because we talk about those four Cs, the collaboration, the critical thinking, the communication, and the creativity, and how we're using technology to maximize those areas. And I think that if parents are able to come Wednesday night to the parent technology night, to, to have a little plug at the same time, that really is the focus, is to show how technologies are being used to promote collaboration, to promote creativity and critical thinking and communication. It's not about the tool. It's what we're doing with the tool, and it's what we're doing within every one of our curriculum areas. And that-
It's going to be great. So reschedule from a snowstorm, Wednesday, 6:30, Foxborough High School.
And if you didn't pre-register, that's fine. You can register at the door.
Show up.
All right.
And their babysit, babysitting will be provided by the National Honor Society. But a lot of the strategies here really stem to the technology plan, which we've, again, talked a lot and done a lot so far this year. The MasQ evaluators, the program evaluation. We have our third full-day meeting tomorrow with that. And although we're coming to the end of this three-year plan, it is still in full force, everything that we're doing in order to meet these objectives there. The last objective, to maintain strong support for public education within the town of Foxborough. I think our teaching and learning highlight and following that with the partnerships really is a great example of how we do have strong support for public education from the community and that we continue to do what we can to also communicate to the public, like the district report card that went out for the second year here. So a lot of work is being done within and around the community to really support the schools, and it goes hand in hand.
Thank you for that update. Oh, so much good work happening. A lot of work happening. Kind of segues into-
You know, can I interject for one second?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I, I have said it before, I was lucky to be able to participate as a parent on the, the work, in the working group, the task force for the first, well, for this strategic plan. And it was five, four years ago?
It took us a year and a half to do, actually.
And to put together the plan, and then the plan was three years out. And as we're coming to the end of the plan, I am so impressed with how much work's been done and that we have really achieved and surpassed some of the goals that we set. It's, it's really impressive. I, I, as far as the technology, some of the things we're doing, that the kids are doing with the technology in class, we didn't even know about when we started this plan. So I, I'm very impressed with how this has all turned out. I would just have to say that.
I'm glad you interjected, Tina, because I was going to say the same thing. I mean, I, you know, I know it's been a strong several years for our school system. And you know how proud we are of you, Debbie and Amy and Bill, for your leadership and what you've done. But to me, this document's just a great reflection of that, so.
Well, and Bruce, we couldn't do it without the community's support. We are very lucky to have our, our CIP plans. My son came home today. He goes, we got Windows 7 today. Our new computers are installed. He's very excited. That's at the Ahrens School. But we couldn't do these things, we couldn't have achieved these goals if we didn't have the town support at town meeting for our budget. So I thank everybody.
Absolutely. I think, you know, such good work came out of that group. And, and we started with literally nothing. And that's why it took a year and a half.
It was a lot of stuff.
We had nothing. We had no data. We had no plan. We had no prior plan. There was really nothing in place.
We, we had no way that, we didn't even know how we were going to begin to gather the data.
Correct. And needed some professional outside help in terms of what a process should look like. So I would say, you know, this plan came into effect in May of that year, just a few months before I took over as superintendent. And so I'm a new superintendent with a new plan, and it, there's a lot of work in that. And I think, you know, not that I ever wasn't confident, but you say so much work and you say, oh my goodness, can this all happen in three years?
Yeah.
And to, when we went over the update, Amy, I thought, this really is coming to fruition. Like, we really, most of these things are really going to come to a nice end of the road by the end of the school year when we do our very last update on it. And we really are ready to form a new plan. And I think because it represented so much work, you know, part of me was wondering, are we going to have this three-year plan and then we're going to have to roll, you know, a third of it over into, but it, it really was just right. I give, you know, the huge committee so much credit because we didn't envision a lot of it, but it seems to be just right for a lot of hard work in a three-year period. So.
It's remarkable, all of the, you know, the data. You can't dispute that. It's just to see these increases.
And the way it's reported, I love the highlight of the dates.
Yeah.
And whether it is in progress, whether it is completed or completed and ongoing. It's, the reporting of it is excellent, so that at every step, people know where it is.
That's the goal.
The fact that, you know, we've exceeded our goal on SATs, on, you know.
We've exceeded our goal.
AP classes, you know, I mean, it's, it's-
Isn't one more AP class going in in the fall, AP studio art. So we're continuing.
Move.
Very nice.
Wow. For our creative students. It's wonderful.
Do you want to move on to talk about the planning process now?
Yes, why not? So now that we're starting to wind down on that three-year plan, the question is, what are we going to do now? So as I wrote to you in the memo, I'm here really tonight to hear what, what your thoughts are. My very broad thoughts were that we don't need to go through a year and a half process because we had a process that worked. The components of it that worked really, really well, although it took a lot of time because we didn't have anything, was gathering data. And we had to go search for that data last time, distilling the data down to what the priorities were in terms of its weight of importance. And then the SWOT that we, we call it the SWOT process, which was what are our strengths, what are our weaknesses, what are our opportunities and what are threats to getting to where we want to be. And I think those components we are familiar with and they really worked well. So I would like to keep the components we had. But I, I don't feel we have to start from scratch again. I think we have so much data now that we didn't have before. We have the data warehouse with all of our academic data. We have assessments across the district in multiple layers that we didn't have before at all. We have data from our culture and climate surveys. This will be our third year, so we can look at longitudinal trends for what parents are saying, what students are saying, and what our staff is saying. We have the MasTEL survey that our educators take. It's a statewide survey on their experience as educators. We have anti-bullying data. We have drug and alcohol data. We, our new tech plan and this MasQ evaluator is one of the best things we've done. We're going to have a lot of data after tomorrow. We're going to actually spend the next two months collecting data about our tech initiatives so that we can evaluate them. So by the time we get to that point, to that fourth, I mean, the third goal, which is around technology and, or the use of it toward academic, you know, advancement, that we are already going to have that data collected as part of our tech plan evaluation. So we'd be able to bring that right into the strategic planning group, and that, that's about a fourth of everything we'd need. And that will already have been collected and analyzed by our MasQ evaluator team, which is 10 people. And we should wrap that up sometime in May. We're just trying to pick dates today. And the educator evaluation survey. So I, we are at the point where we feel we have a lot of data already at the ready, and it's just a matter of distilling it and, and seeing what priorities emerge through our processes. So I was thinking, as I mentioned, that we could do this ourselves and do it within a few-month period, maybe ambitiously, thinking we could wrap up by July or certainly by August, maybe September sometimes. But I do think that we could have another iteration of the plan in place, using the same types of processes and doing it ourselves. So I don't know how you feel about that.
When you say doing it ourselves, so what, what did you envision a group?
Well, we had an outside, we had an outside facilitator last time that we learned a lot from, I think, safe to say. And I, I think that we can replicate that process through our own leadership team and with the help of the committee. And that's why when I sent out the, the second annual district report card that just got mailed to postal customers in Foxborough, that I said, we're about to do this. So if you as a community member or a parent have interest, please let me know. So I think if we could recreate the same process of a few community members, a few parents, a few teachers, a few administrators, and, and put together kind of a balanced team, that we could lead ourselves through it, because I, I do think we have the strength and the talent to do that. I, I believe that.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. So do we, can we come up, can you come up with like maybe a timeline? So do we, can we come up, can you come up with like maybe a timeline?
I would be happy to.
About how to compose the group and when it would be composed by?
I'll do that for our next meeting.
That'd be perfect.
And then you can think about who of you would really enjoy it perhaps again, or perhaps newly.
Tina did an excellent job.
I enjoyed it, but I, I wouldn't wanna deny anybody the opportunity to participate if they were interested. Fresh eyes are always good, too.
How about, if you're, if you have an interest, you can, you can let Debbie know.
I was, though, as a parent, parent representative, and I, I really enjoyed it as a parent representative. It was a great opportunity.
And I think I was the school committee representative. Because we worked together.
And two is fine, because if you're, if you are participating on a, if you're participating on a team or a committee that is designed to inform me, then it's not a subcommittee and it's not a posted meeting, so two would be fine. I think the more people we have that understand all of the business of the schools, the better, and I think balanced perspectives is great, so.
Okay, great.
You can think about it.
Yeah, but it helped, excuse me.
Oh, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Would it help the team that, that's gonna go down the road sort of on its own now, now that we've got some pretty good experience, to have the consulting firm give us a roadmap?
Well, it wasn't a consulting firm, it was actually a parent in the community that used to do that process for nonprofits, and she now works full-time in Boston. So she's not actually doing that anymore. At the time, she had time to do it as a volunteer. So we didn't actually use a firm, we used a local expert who was wonderful. But I think there were many of us who were on that, and I have all the records of what we did and how we did it. And, and we have so much data now that I, I don't feel, if you remember, it took us almost a year to figure out what information we needed and how to get it.
Right.
And, and that was, that was the trickiest part.
And then to go through it all.
We have people that were on this before that understand the process.
Yes.
So I think that that's, if, if we need additional resources, I'm sure we can seek those out, but I have confidence that people know, yes.
I'm pretty comfortable with it. I mean, having been on it myself and on through it, I, I don't feel that we need that. I mean, I, we know who she is and what her number is, so if we do get stuck at some point, I'm sure we can make a call.
Okay, great. All right, so we'll look forward to giving that timeline.
What would, what would be your thought on how the rest of the committee would input into the plan through that process?
Well, what happened last time, which seemed to work pretty well, is that we came up with a draft of the strategic plan, it came to the committee for review, and before the committee disbanded, and if there are any areas you wanted more information, or, you know, what were the underlying root causes of why we, we set that as a priority, then we came back. But I think there were two meetings, there was a first draft, there was discussion if you wanted more information, the committee then took that under advisement, and then we came back for a final approval.
Okay.
A good point, though, Bruce.
Yeah, that was a good question.
I think that, I, I remember as well wanting to have input, even though I wasn't on the committee, so maybe we could get-
Well, yes, and then remember, one of the very final meetings, we had over at the recreation building-
Yes.
On Mill Street-
That's right.
With a combined, it was a former school committee meeting with that whole committee.
That's a really good idea. So we could, we could, we could, when I do the timeline, we could actually plan to wrap up over the summer and make it part of our retreat.
I don't remember what time of year it was, but don't you remember?
It wasn't the summer, I can, I can interject that. I think this, it was towards the tail end of the school year.
The school year.
I voted on this in May, this became effective in May of 2011.
So it was, it was during the school year that we had that meeting.
And whatever, wherever we're at that point, that wouldn't be, that would be, you know, that wouldn't be a bad idea, that'd be a good idea. So you can really become more familiar with all the nitty-gritty and, and feel comfortable about it.
Make, make sure, though, that we do have some input early on as well, so like in the-
Oh, well, yes.
Maybe bring it back. You, you can give us some ideas, and then we can see if it's enough for us to-
Sure.
Feel like we have enough meetings to, to respond to.
Sounds good.
Okay, great. All right, now we're gonna talk about superintendent's mid-cycle review.
Yes.
So you wanna hear from us, right?
Yes, so if you remember last year, I provided you with a lot of documents about how I was coming along, and I thought I got great advice. I, I'm assuming that you wanted specific evidence still for progress toward my individual goals, which I have provided for you tonight, and where I think I am in my goals, as well as some data to back up some of those things. And then in terms of last year, I provided you with sample evidence for all of the standards and indicators in the superintendent's rubric, and very wisely, the committee said, "Maybe we don't need all of this mid-cycle, and maybe you could just come and answer three questions." And I wrote them down verbatim, which is, what am I really proud of? What am I working hard on, and what challenges do I face? And that maybe would provide a really good focus for discussion at the mid-year point as to where I think I am. So I wrote you the memo as a result of that, and, you know, I don't mind if you want me to go over the highlights of that, or if you just wanna ask me some questions about what stood out for you.
We've changed our mind, we wanna thorough.
Oh, God. Bruce, speak for yourself. You want the binder?
No.
Oh, okay.
I still have the binder.
It's his, it's his favorite.
Do you really? We have a shredder.
Right-time reading.
You know, Debbie, I really liked how you did this. I liked reading your memo here with, you know, your just, your personal feelings and responses to those three questions, and then I also, I did also really like this to look at. I felt like they were really a, a good fit. I guess one question that I do have, one of the things that you had talked about was one of your challenges, is all of the local, state, and federal initiatives and requirements-
Yes.
-that, that we face as we're trying to meet those initiatives, right, and those, and those requirements.
I do find that the most challenging, because in this day and age with so much going on and so many demands placed on all educators, no matter what you do, what your role is, is just trying to find that balance, that how do we make forward progress, juggle all the initiatives, meet all the, the constraints and the mandates, and still feel like we're doing quality work with students on a personal level? And I think that's, that's the rub. You can be very focused on meeting requirements, but what are we doing for kids every single day, which is what I teach us really focus on, that sort of personal approach to education that I know we value here in Foxborough. So managing that change process, which is why I wrote about, can be really difficult as the, as a leader of the team, and I know it, all of our team leaders feel that way, that managing that change process can be difficult in any environment, but in a complex educational environment and in a public sector, it can be even more challenging, because everything we do is very transparent and very visible, so we're not the company that can say, "We're just gonna take a while and private figure this out." I mean, everything is, you know, what you see is what's happening. So I do sometimes feel that some of these initiatives that are coming down from, whether it's Department of Ed, or the government's office, or the federal government, that sometimes they don't even have relationships to one another, so they can feel very isolated. And that, so that process of prioritizing for us is, and, and having clear action steps really requires a lot of careful attention. We spend a lot of time as administrative team, really planning out how to do something well, not just how to get it done, but how do we do it well in a way that has meaning and is important, and that, you know, in the end, we'll find that we got something out of it. And I think that, that's really, you know, that, that's really, and, and so we feel that these things happen in isolation, and if we feel it, teachers feel it even more so. So as we're planning carefully, we also have to try on, on our level to show some connection for our staff, so that is less isolating for them, that they can see that there's gonna be a relationship in the future, or there's a relationship now, you just might not be able to see it. That can be really challenging. And then, because I worry about the soul part of education, I, I do worry about how are our educators going to maintain that level of enthusiasm, their love for, for teaching, while trying to, you know, juggle this incredible workload and, and the demands that just keep piling on in, in this environment. So we worry about the softer things, about how do we get this done so people still, you know, don't lose their, their enthusiasm and don't lose their drive and their passion for what they do, because they didn't go into teaching to meet mandates, they went into it because they love the children in front of them every day. So, you know, how are we gonna balance what we need to do and encourage them to continue to, to find that passion and not have the light go out is, is really challenging, and I think we think about that a lot.
It's so funny, because I, I feel like, you know, from an outside perspective, being on the committee, but obviously not seeing that day-to-day, when you talk about professional development, and you talk about these, you know, our professional educators who are so enthusiastic about learning more-
They are.
-I say, "I think that that's representative, that you do a good job of balancing this."
Trying.
But that's just one example, but it, so I think that if you keep that in the focus, like you and, I'm sure you and your team do, that, that'll be at the forefront of all the decisions that you make, because, you know, in order to keep your professional educators involved and feel like they're a stakeholder, that, then that's going to then, you know, translate into them, you know, doing the things that they're doing, which is being better at what they do, right, and learning more, so.
Right. We'll try. We constantly talk about what could we take away, and there really is very rarely anything. So we keep asking the question, though.
Right.
I think one way that we as a committee try to help you, or help the teachers with that, is to put, you know, strong instructional leaders into the leadership positions, and so I think having you and Amy, you know, with your commitment and focus, is a good start. But I'm glad this is an area that you worry about and that we continually strive toward, because, let's face it, as a committee, we can do things programmatically, but at the end of the day, it's that interaction between the teacher and the student, so.
Yes.
And the more dynamic and engaging we can make that, the more our outcomes will grow, so.
Right.
I think that's, I'm glad you called it out.
Well, and to the point that I forgot to say, which you reminded me of, is the one thing I don't worry about is providing the resources for the change process, because I think we're lucky here through your support and the town support, that it's not like, it's not that we're rolling in it or anything, but we, we find a way, and you find a way, and we find a way working with the town to really provide at least the basic things we need to move that change process forward, because that would be even harder if we said we, you know, "We have to do this, and we don't have any resources to get behind it." So that's the one thing I don't worry about, and I so noted it in print. So thanks for that.
Anybody else? Any comments? No?
I, I'll just add more general comment. I, I think, Debbie, your assessment of your progress on each of your objectives is in line with my personal view of, of how we're performing. I like, you know, for the public who can't see this, I mean, you range in, in your evaluation from areas with some progress made to areas where we've exceeded progress. I think that's a broad and accurate representation. I, I love the fact that you have a specific STEM and business growth plan, because all the literature, as you know, says that the science and technology areas are gonna continue to be the areas of future job growth and opportunity. So I think that the fact that you have a specially-called-out document and plan about that is important. I know Mr. Yudin feels the same.
Yes.
I know the whole committee feels the same, so I-
I was gonna say, hey, the rest of us are great.
I should've said, a special, a special project area.
He was getting around to us, he wasn't gonna leave us out.
But no, I, I agree, I think, I think you've done a nice job.
Thank you.
I do have a question about the, your STEM growth plan, which I think is fabulous and exciting. I had a couple of questions.
Yes.
I know the senior project, and I can't wait to hear what Ellen Pillsbury has to tell us when the guidance department comes to give their summary, but I was wondering how many of our seniors, if we know how many, are doing STEM work in senior projects?
I don't know, but when they come for their update, when it's, I think they wanna come back when it's already in motion.
Yep.
And they should have, they, they plan to come with a, you know, some data on what kinds of things are the kids doing, so that will be-
That'll be great to find out about.
Really interesting.
And then the other thing I, I just wanted to, to talk about for a second, on the second page, goal to be, investigate the potential for development of computer programming for us, or after-school code curricular activity, opportunity rather, I mean, we had some students in here-
The Hour of Code.
About the Hour of Code, a few weeks ago, and they were so enthusiastic, I think, you know, clearly their support for that.
No question.
I would really love to see it happen, I just wondered if there's been any movement on that.
Well, I'd say this, that students continue to engage in the Hour of Code type.
Yes.
And, and so there, it is starting to percolate. In terms of this specific goal, that's why it's still in white, to say, "Do we have an after-school computer programming club, or do we have a computer programming course yet?" No. So my goal for September was the engineering course, which is happening, and you'll see in, in the additional information, that we were successful in getting that UTEACH engineering grant, to allow our teacher to go, so I'm pretty excited about that. And the goal was, you know, we can't bite off more than we can chew, so we're going for the engineering course for September, done, and then in my mind, I'm going for the computer programming course a year from September, so we are working on that. It is challenging, actually was a topic of conversation with the folks at Schneider Electric.
Nice.
Gotta practice that, in terms of if they, you know, if they, if they have any resources that could help us. It is a challenge, as you can imagine, to have somebody teaching a programming course when things change in that field, you know, quite frequently. But it's not, not doable, so it's gonna just take us a longer time to figure that out.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the update.
Yeah, thank you. This was, this was, this was great, I love this. I love seeing what the growth point was. Thank you. All right.
Well, it's all evidence, too, because when, when a letter like this arrived from Matthew H. Malone, PhD, Secretary of Education.
Yes.
Dear Superintendent Spinelli, I recently visited at Foxborough High School and was greatly impressed by the innovative staff and the engaged student body. Also impressive was the variety of courses and programs offered to your students. It was a great visit.
It really was. Dr. Malone, Joe met Dr. Malone when he came, he's the Secretary of Education to the governor, and we actually had a really-
What prompted that visit?
Well, he does like to visit all the schools, he try, he's trying to get to every school district in Massachusetts, he's been in the position about a year. So he really does visit a couple of school districts, several school districts a week. And so we arranged his visit here, and one of the things that I liked about his visit is, I call it the non-traditional tour. So we started out the main, we came to the high school, down the main corridor, we visited some math classes, he's very interactive, so he likes to interact with the students. But then, you know, some of the traditional tours that he gets are, then we go to the English department, then we go to the science department, and I just decided a non-traditional tour might be in order. So we went down to see the thousand paper cranes, and we saw the cafeteria, and we talked a lot about the new MSBA rules for the sizes of the cafeteria and the media center, and so we, we had discussion about that, about how we're so grateful that we were, that we went with a renovation project, because we still have a two-story media center. If we were building new, that would not happen. So we talked a lot about those things, you know, and with him, it was a good topic of conversation. Then we went to visit some of our other classes, like Joe's class, paid program, and we went down to visit the wood, he was very fascinated when I told him we still had a wood shop. So we went to visit that, looked at the equipment, and he just, he couldn't believe it, and he turned around and he said, "Don't ever let this, like, go away." I said, "Oh, do not worry, we're not." And that kind of learning is so important for some students, and it's very popular. And then we went to the CAD lab, so he looked at graphic design and the equipment that we had in the air, and he was so impressed. And then we went to, like, down, down around the art wing, the gym, and we went to the wellness center, so he could see what the YMCA had done, and he was bowled away by that. So I call it the non-traditional tour, but we got in some really good conversations about the variety of students that we serve and what's required to serve them, you know, that's not always the traditional classes. And, but my favorite part of the tour was how many times he noted how clean, well-maintained the high school was. So kudos to our maintenance and custodial staff, because he couldn't believe how pristine the building was and how respectful the environment was from the students. So that was my favorite part of the tour.
That's great.
So thanks to our people.
Yes, thank you. Wow. It's amazing. I saw that.
We had a good visit.
All right. Do we want to go in?
I'm sorry. My, my tail is wagging really fast at the Cockrell School of Engineering at UT.
Yes.
Letter of acceptance is some pretty good money in here for professional development.
This, this is exciting, too.
Yeah, I think this is a doorway that's been flung over. It's a double door that's flung over.
Yes.
And it's a wower of an email.
Pretty excited about it personally.
So, you know, yeah.
Yes.
Maybe I should have said earlier, I know that Steve's tail especially wagging.
I'm telling you, best things happen when you stop by a booth. That's what I say.
About five, about five Halloweens ago, you would have seen an actual tail wagging at Carmine Avenue.
Okay.
But I say in short order, because I met those people just in the summer, the beginning of the summer last year is when I met those people. So the fact that I met them and we investigated and we got somebody to come and talk to our staff about it, and we got the course going, and we got it approved by you.
Yeah, it was a slam dunk.
We got it in the program of studies, and we got a grant, so one of our teachers is going for two weeks to Texas in the summer.
Yeah, on the, on the, on the grants, on the grants dime.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know, that's awesome. And the...
Just got to step on the gas.
Advisory committee was excited when we mentioned that to them, too, when we presented our materials.
It's going to be a great partnership. It really is.
What's, okay, and what's exciting is that we have partnerships locally, and we have partnerships across the country.
Nationally.
Yeah, so.
National.
Okay, so we're under other matters now. I don't know if some of this really belongs under other matters that we just discussed, but does anybody have any?
We do have a school committee meeting again next week.
We do.
We usually have a week off in between, so just kind of reminding everybody, next Monday we will see you. And then I would like to bring up something for us to maybe ruminate over for a while. There was one week, there was already scheduled a professional day, professional workshop day. But that week, we were not in school, and then we were in school the next day, and then we were not in school, and then we were in school next day, and then the professional. But two of those days were snow days. So the question is, when we are looking at, at our schedule next year, which is always a sensitive, how do we balance it? Some of the teachers have expressed a concern to me who are, because we are adding, each year we add more AP classes. When you start missing school for AP classes, there's no makeup time, and those exams come anyway.
Right.
So do we want, would we ever want to consider starting the school year before Labor Day? So this is just for us, I mean, that, that's a concern the teachers are now having.
Well, we, we have to actually, by contract, we have to offer the proposed calendar to the, to the FEA. At the same time, I'm sending it to you for your first look. I send it to them, and they meet and they discuss it. So I get their feedback before I make suggestions to you.
Well, but you see, we haven't, we haven't had a lot of snow days before, Debbie.
Well, we had five last year, and we're at three now. So I would say if you can order up no snow, I'd be grateful. But I, I don't, you know, if we didn't have that, we'd be okay, but I don't know if we can...
No, just because this was a teacher concern coming to me, I just thought I would share, because it's something for us.
It's a valid point.
It's, I mean...
Well, the, the point is valid.
Well, there's a story on CNM.com today about schools going to virtual snow days and assigning students. It's, you know, they're waiting, I think it's in New Jersey, the one, the district.
Got a mixed review.
And it, you know, but an AP class now, that might be something where teachers could assign work to students to do in, if they know it's going to be, or, you know.
I think they do. I will give them credit. I think one of the things that, that we, as we continue to think about it, that we should remember is that we do three professional, we have to have 185-day calendar. We do three professional development days the week before Labor Day. If we were to have students get, say, if we had to do only two of those days, and then students come for two days, then we still have that third PD day we normally do before kids come that would interrupt. So that's why, that would then provide more interruption during the year when people don't want it. And we're only gaining one day, and we're gaining an interruption. So when we've had conversations with, you know, our FEA and our teachers, you know, a group of them, that doesn't, that in, in most people's minds does not make it worth the while, because I think sometimes we think, well, if we could get three kids' days in before Labor Day, but that wouldn't happen for us, because we have five PD days. So we would end up, instead of three PD days and the kids wait to come back, we would have Monday and Tuesday PD days and kids back Wednesday, Thursday. And then the, the school year is going to be interrupted again, and teachers dislike that more, that we don't have a full five, five-week, five-day week. So there's trade-offs, so it doesn't gain you as much as you think, given the fact that we have to fit in five, that we do fit in five PDs. Just wanted to lay out the whole scene.
No, but it was a teacher concern that, you know, so I...
No, thank you for sharing that.
I think we need to weigh it, and depending on the severity of the winter. But, but that time for an AP class is gone unless we move to a virtual AP-type thing.
It's pretty much only the AP students that ever say to me, "Please don't call us a snow day." Pretty much.
Well, I know, but I mean, there, there is, what I'm saying is, in, in view of the fact that we are tending to add more AP classes, this is something I think we should not dismiss lightly.
Okay.
It's a good thing to chew on, because, again, we are trying to go into the future with our technology, and kids begging to go to school is like music to my ears, particularly if it's...
Well, it's a relief to you.
Especially teenage. I mean, I mean, it's, yeah.
Okay, any, anything else? I mean, Joe, I'm sorry, Joe had his hand up. I'm sorry, please.
I was thinking this, maybe they should do like two, like we should go back like the Wednesday or Thursday, the day before, then you have an extra-long weekend.
Yeah, people would still want their long Labor Day weekend, you're right.
Then you have an extra-long Labor Day. We can do two days, like say Wednesday and Thursday, then go back, then have the four-day weekend.
Could, Joe, but then we have to take the professional day that we're missing and have you out of school on another Friday or Monday and just have teachers come like we do those two days. So what we've, the feedback we've gotten from our teachers, they like to have the year not, like, and many parents, actually, not to have it interrupted more than twice during the year.
Correct. So I think it's a good idea that you do three before Labor Day, then you get to do two before during the school year, like say October, November, then, then have one in January.
So the board's agreed to think about it? Is that what we'll do?